Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, Wednesday, October 27, 2023 at 8:30 a.m., City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, I'd like to call Father Richard Visconti with Christ Episcopal Church up to do our prayer and then we'll do the invocation. Please stand.
Let us take a moment of prayer. Oh God, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Grant us this morning clarity of vision, a courage of conviction, and compassion of cooperation as we deliberate decisions which affect the citizens of Bradenton. May the actions of this body always be for the community's good and the record of our civic stewardship be blameless in your sight. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Good morning. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October 2023. The city of Bradenton recognizes the vital role technology has in our daily lives and that many critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant upon information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas people and our infrastructure face increasing threats towards of cyber attacks. And whereas since its inception in 2004, Cybersecurity Awareness Month has elevated the central role that cybersecurity plays in our economy and in the lives of our citizens. And whereas the security of critical infrastructure depends on federal, state, local, tribal, and territorial coordination with infrastructure owners and operators to achieve greater strength and security. And whereas the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency works with partners to defend against threats and collaborate with industry to build more secure and resilient infrastructure for the future. And whereas everyone can help increase awareness on cybersecurity, best practices to reduce cyber risks. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Bradenton and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of cybersecurity and to observe this month through events, training, and education related to cybersecurity. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have to accept this? Obviously.
Good morning.
Good morning. Karen Lankie, the IT Director for the city of Bradenton. I just wanted to say thank you for taking this very seriously and helping us get the word out. We will be working to send out some tips and some education to the community through social media through the month of October and also internally to our citizens, I mean our customers, our employees. So, thank you very much.
And I think it's important to notice that obviously we had some issues a while back. The county had an issue. Fort Lauderdale just had a huge issue. And, you know, we're not alone in this, but we're, we've got a great staff and a great leader that's every day probably having to change something to try to beat the bad guy. So, we appreciate that.
And we appreciate everybody also helping us do this. Everybody, everybody helps count and what they do counts.
Mr. Perry.
Mayor, if I could just add that Ms. Lankie's done a great job along with our IT staff and they have put an emphasis on, on IT security and cybersecurity awareness. It is constantly changing these threats, the technology that's used for penetrations and defeating firewalls and all of the hardware we can do, the training that's associated with it. And, you know, it's not a problem until it's a problem, but when it's a problem, it's a really bad problem. And we saw that, I think, on Northport about a couple of years ago that was actually penetrated, hacked. Their information was held for ransom and you get into that situation. So, it's pretty significant and we handle it in a variety of different ways. I feel comfortable that our personnel, our plans and our programs dealing with it are effective in today's modern world, but it's constantly changing.
And I think one of the things that we've got to realize and, you know, I get probably almost every email that comes in for all departments and just as the copy. So, I do read those and check with the different departments. Is this right? Is it wrong? Is it a scam? Is it different things? And I know that without going into too much, because I know Chief Bevins would probably not want to go into too much, whatever you would call it, secret stuff, but we do have programs in order. We have done everything. We've stepped up and we appreciate that through the IT department.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to turn around and kind of get a picture? I'll see the background here, yeah. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The next item on the agenda is the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Grant Program Awards from the Bradenton Police Department.
And who do we have presenting this today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elba and I, and I want to start off by saying, Elba put this together. This is hard work. It's a yearly event. This is actually our sixth annual award ceremony. We have more people, so I'm going to try to go pretty quick here to get them in and out and get a photo. And I'm going to tell you all, don't leave after you've been handed your check because we're going to do a group photo at the end. This is always one of my favorite days, probably the same for you, because we get to give away money. And we get to give away money to organizations that are, you know, just so prominent in our community, organizations that help our kids, that help women in distress, that help animals in distress. None of these organizations do what they do without funding. All nonprofits always looking to try to increase their services and I think that this really shows what this city is, because this isn't the police department money, this is your money, but it shows what this city is willing to do with what we have to try to grow and help some of the more disadvantaged programs and people in our community and make them great. So, it's always a wonderful thing. I always wish I could give more and we do give more. We're required by statute to give away 25% of what we take in every year. I'll tell you, I hit the 25% and a lot of the programs we do throughout the year, people who come and say, hey, can you buy a table? Can you donate to this? So, everything that we're giving away today, almost $16,000, is above and beyond what we were required to do by statute because it's truly that important for us. So, just wanted to let you know that. First one up, and I'm going to let them just do a quick presentation and just let you know where the money's going and what they're doing. Michael Wood with the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee. If you want to come up first and Elba, you want to come up and stand here too. And also, obviously, you see the staff, police department staff behind me. You know, this, this is meaningful to what we do as well because the more we can give a handout to members of our community, the easier it makes our job as well. And so, this is an important event, not just for you, not just for me, but everybody here is evidenced by them standing back there. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. First off, thank you to the council. Thank you, Chief Bevins and Elba, who I finally see in person. I've only had an email relationship for like six years with.
State your name in it.
That was great.
State your name and organizations.
Michael Wood with Boys and Girls Clubs of Manatee County. And first, Mrs. Stan Hope sends her apologies for not being here today. She had a conflict of interest, so you got me today. And the money that is, that you have provided is going to students at Rogers Garden Elementary and the Boys and Girls Club there and at Manatee Elementary, the Boys and Girls Club there. It's providing a reward system for doing the right thing, increasing their grades, learning about community policing, engagement, being a good citizen. So, that's very quick order and thank you all again. Thank you, Chief Bevins.
And Michael, we'll take you because you've been with the Boys and Girls Club for a very long time and been very intricate, I think, in keeping that organization moving forward.
I much appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, 11 years. I'm one of the old people now.
Thank you so much. Edrick Sweeting, President and Patricia Johnson, Bradenton Gladiators Football. And Charles, I think you at least need to come down here, please, and stand. I know you don't ever like to. So, come on down.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Edrick Sweeting, President of the Bradenton Gladiators. Again, I want to thank you guys for this opportunity to continue to support us. The Bradenton Gladiators mission is to promote education, teach important life lessons, and foster strong character development and academic excellence through sports. And again, we'd like to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to continue that with our youth in the county.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I was trying to get Charles down here because we actually are supporting two football teams and so I had my, and I think they compete against each other, so sorry about that. I don't know who's going to come out the winner on this one. I can't help but say that this is one of my favorite organizations for obvious reasons, the BPD Explorer Post. So, come on down, everybody. Are you going to speak? This is awesome. Okay.
Sergeant Davis is going to start.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. I'm Sergeant Davis. With the Explorer Posts, we've been there for quite some time. Not only do we produce people that are wanting to become police officers in the future, but it's also an opportunity to instill moral compass into the community through our next generation, right? So, this organization goes forward and helps to do a lot in our community. We also do volunteer work throughout our community. You see the explorers throughout, but again, yes, it does develop future police officers as well. So, thank you for thinking about us and giving to us and giving us the opportunity to keep doing what we do.
Thank you. Laura.
Good morning. My name is Claudia Palacios. I was a former explorer, now a sworn officer with Bradenton Police Department. I was in the explorers for four years and nothing could have prepared me more than the explorers. It was nice transitioning from scenarios to real-life situations now and working side by side with my once-advisors and explorers. The explorers, it was a great time in there and I hope to go back in the future to train the future generation and become an advisor with the explorers as well. Thank you guys for everything.
The Kleenex are coming out.
A lot of times, you know, as Sergeant Davis said, we kind of rear up these kids and they go off in different directions. They go to college, they join the military, and that's, that's wonderful, right? But when they choose to come back home to roost, that's, that's exactly why we have this program. And the folks that you saw up here, standing next to them, they do that because they want to do it. It's a volunteer activity and because of them being willing to commit their time. So, anyway, okay, I'll stop. I'm showing favoritism. Angelica Silvestri, President, Prevention Specialist with Drug-Free Manatee.
Welcome.
Hello. So, like she said, I'm Angelica.
Say your name for the record.
I'm Angelica Silvestri. I'm the Prevention Specialist with Drug-Free Manatee. Drug-Free Manatee is a nonprofit organization that is a substance abuse prevention coalition. We have adult and youth initiatives and we also do a lot of work with our local community. For example, on October 25th, we have our candlelight vigil to honor those who lost their lives to overdose and our Red Ribbon Event on October 26th to promote prevention in the local community.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know you were Speaker at that event last year and obviously, everybody's welcome to attend. That's an important event in our community and, you know, it's, I think it's important to get out there and show support for, for folks within there. Rick Yocum, Executive Director, Humane Society of Manatee County. Come on up, Rick.
You're not a new guy anymore.
No, no. So, Mayor, council members, staff of the city of Bradenton, Chief Bevins, and the men and women standing in the back of the room from the Bradenton Police Department. I couldn't be prouder than to be a nonprofit leader in this community. The support is amazing. Every time a storm comes, by the way, the phone call I get a day or two ahead of time is from the Bradenton Police Department, making sure we're okay, and they check on us throughout. I'm lucky because I get to watch these broken animals that come in from neglect and cruelty cases and I get to see them rehabilitated and rehomed. And we truly appreciate the support. Thank you all so much and thank you, Chief Bevins.
Well, close to it. Victoria Caston, she's the Chair of Making an Impact.
Good morning. I'm Victoria Caston, Board Chair at Making an Impact. We are a nonprofit supporting Sarasota and Manatee County. We provide information that empowers people and provides them with information on how to find help. You may be familiar with our Blue Book. We do provide this to our law enforcement agencies. Both sheriff departments and most police departments are using this. We've distributed 5,000 of these books in less than three years' time. We have it in English, we have it in Spanish, it's online in more than 20 languages. What I am going to be leaving the council today is our Disaster Guide, which we created last year in reaction to Hurricane Ian. We are an information resource and we were getting calls about things people wanted for disasters. That wasn't our area, but we rallied and came, came into that. We have 100 organizations in here that provide disaster recovery information. American Red Cross and even FEMA used our Disaster Guide. We will be leaving copies for the council and I will be dropping off with Elba copies for our law enforcement agencies. I just would like to read you very quickly a comment from Sheriff Wells and we hope to get a similar comment from Chief Bevins. But I'm sure this speaks for all law enforcement agencies. Sheriff Wells says, "Every day our deputies come in contact with people who have needs beyond what we as law enforcement agency are equipped to handle. It's great to have this ready reference guide with a list of resource programs and organizations that can provide additional services. It's our hope that people in our community will find the help they need and will continue to do what we can to point them in the right direction." I'm sure that speaks on behalf of our Bradenton Police Department, who also use the guide and we'll be getting your comments and your testimonial just shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
He looks really old in that picture. Her coming up here just kind of made me think of something. I think with the exception of maybe two of the organizations, the one thing you might realize is that these are repeat organizations and it's, it doesn't just come easily. They actually have a reporting mechanism where they need to show us that they spent the money exactly how we instructed that they spend it and that they show positive results. And so, I think that's important that we, we kind of reaffirm year after year that they're doing the right thing with everything. Drina Green, Program Administrator, Manatee County Girls Club Just for Girls.
Good morning.
I'm Alex Jenny Green, the Program Administrator for Manatee County Girls Club, doing business that's just for girls. With me today, I also have Kaylin Haig, who is our Resource Development and Communications Manager. To Chief Bevins, City Administrator Perry, Mayor Brown, JFG alum, Mary Ann Barnaby, and the rest of the city council, we would just like to say thank you. I will provide the clerk with our annual report where you're able to see our results that we've achieved over the past year through both our successful private and partnership, public and private partnerships such as this one. We are providing academic enrichment and support, behavior intervention, and character development. Children are our greatest resource and research proves that breaking the generational cycles of poverty improves the local economy more than any other investment. Prevention, intervention, and education are more effective and less expensive than failure in welfare, treatment, or hospitalization, school dropout, or even incarceration. So, in closing, we recognize that potential is universal, but opportunities are not. But here in our city, opportunities are greater because of the resources such as these. So, and these resources create and improve the quality of life for all of our residents. So, thank you again for helping create a brighter future. Thank you for helping girls find safety and survival and success, and thank you for helping local girls achieve their full potential. Thank you again.
Get in the picture.
I keep yelling at Elba to get in the picture and she's defying me, so.
Thank you.
Charles Stanifer and Jovan Carter, New Manatee Broncos. Come on down, please.
No competition there. No shake hands.
Hey, good morning. My name is Jovan Carter and this is my protege, Charles Stanifer. I'm the Commissioner of the Manatee Bronco. He's the Vice President. I want to thank you all for inviting us again this year and just pulling back into the kids is our main goal. We have like roughly 400 kids or probably more that we have to see out there every single day, make sure they get home safely. And it's, it's a whole lot that we put in with our time, but I want to thank you all for recognizing us because of the work that we putting in to the community. I'd also thank the chief for the officers coming down every day, patrolling the area for us, keeping us safe also. And that's about it, but thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I have one success story for the Broncos. We have three brothers, Jalen, John, and Jontay Western. They all now play for Florida Atlantic University and they all, they are from the Manatee Broncos program. We have more kids too. It's a success story too, that's also in high school playing ball too, that's going to the next level. So, I just want to say thank you guys once again for recognizing us. Anything on the study?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor, and Chief.
Councilwoman Coachman.
Yeah, I just saw something that had a list of the cities that had the most professional football players and Bradenton was number two in the country. So, you must be doing something right. You're doing something right. So, congratulations.
Thank you. And Chief, Chief, one quick thing that I noticed, obviously, my involvement with Manatee High School over the years and obviously, when I played, we were the Chargers, which the Chargers don't exist anymore, but it was the, you know, a league that played with, the youth league. But when you look at today, and the paper yesterday and the rankings of all of our schools in Manatee County now are up there and we're all ahead of Venice right now, but I think that's more of a little anomaly with who Venice played. But, but when you look at it, that shows from all of the schools getting the young men from the youth leagues that is giving them positiveness every day and responsibility. And that's what people don't realize, oh, they just think it's a game, but it's, it's the responsibility that all of the leagues, and we've got about, I think, six of them here in Manatee County, that really work hard to, to make those young men, you know, see character development and, and still play. And we want everybody to win, except for when we're playing you, we want to beat you. But congratulations to both groups and I think it shows how the community is thriving with all the high schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You wouldn't speak, but you want to take the check, I bet, right? Kristi Haley, Development Director, Pace Center for Girls. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Kristi Haley with Pace Center for Girls and I'm here with Katie Reeves, our Community Engagement Coordinator. First of all, thank you to all of you. It's a great day to be a Pace Girl. We have so many exciting things going on, especially with the new building. We're super excited about that moving forward. I want to state that this funding from the Bradenton Police Department is truly for our Growth and Change Program, which our girls carry point cards every day. Katie has some examples for you. So, in every single class, our girls carry point cards that help them meet their goals. They are rated on being on time, achieving their academic success, being kind to others. So much more about our Pace program, but it also goes to Red Ribbon Week, which of course is paramount with this. This is our 25th year of Red Ribbon Week at Pace Center for Girls. We're celebrating it two weeks. With this funding, every girl will get a brand-new red sweatshirt with a Red Ribbon Week slogan about being drug-free and we are so appreciative to your support. And I have to share, Mayor Bevins was so kind, Mayor Bevins, I'm so sorry.
I am her boss.
Yeah, there we go.
That's breaking news.
There's something we don't know here.
Your best office, did you know? I'm announcing. Jane knows I had a slip-up yesterday too. Chief Bevins was so kind to speak at our recent graduation and I want to share one of the quotes that she told all of our girls, "Be the heroine of your life and never the victim. And remember that you alone can live a life that will write the story you were meant to tell and that story aimed for the bestseller, with a life lived with passion, with pleasure, with purpose, and one that brings you peace in your soul." How cool was that to have our Chief of Police telling our girls to go live a life and sell a bestseller? So, I'm so honored that, number one, you're funding us, but also that you support Pace Center for Girls and our girls know that you care about them. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Jean.
I'm good. Now, I just, I just, the graduation, obviously, I was with there with Chief and the others, but just seeing the smiles on those young ladies' faces from where they were six months ago, two years ago and, and looking, and also looking at the family members that were there and the two little brothers for the one young girl that, you know, he saw something that, you know, even though he can't go to Pace Center for Girls as he gets older, but he saw something that his sister succeeded where she wouldn't have succeeded without Pace Center. So, it's just an honor to have, even though you're just outside the city limits where your new building is, but it still serves all of our county and, and we appreciate that.
And one of those young men stated that he wanted to be a police chief, so you made an impact. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know some of the folks in the back probably always look out and say, where's the chief? Where's the chief? She's, you know, her car's always gone and I'll tell you, and the mayor and even council, you know that our job goes so far beyond the walls of this building and those are, those are the fun things, right? It's not the paperwork, it's even sometimes for me, not the police work anymore. It's just being able to see women and men and everybody just grow and develop in this community. It's, it's incredibly touching and it's an honor for me. Ally Floyd, Director and Leadership Development Coach, Girls Program Replay Outreach.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you. As she mentioned, Annalise Floyd, Ally Floyd with Replay Outreach. I've been here in Bradenton since December of last year, so thank you for allowing me to be here in this awesome, awesome city. I've enjoyed working here with these kids. We work at, I work with the at-risk youth and the youth in the Juvenile Justice Program. We help them discover their potential, their passion, and their purpose in life. We've expanded. We've expanded the Replay Outreach Program to after-school activities on Wednesdays and Fridays. We've done that because we've determined that if we can empower some of our youth by just doing simple tasks, they actually can, they discover that there is these little things in life that they enjoy doing, and that helps them determine what their passion is in life. And so, even getting out in the community and doing hard work, that sometimes that they don't realize that they know how to do, if you look at our Facebook page, you'll see just these kids that are having fun and doing this crazy amount of work all day for eight hours, and it's giving back also to the community. So I just enjoy seeing that. I've come from, I'm retired military, and I've come from a background of federal law enforcement as well, and this is just my calling to work with this youth here in this community. So I am so excited to be here, and thank you so much, because this is going to grow our Job Skills Program for Replay Outreach. Thank you.
Last but not least, Shiante Josie, Executive Assistant Business Manager for United Community Centers, also known as the 13th Avenue Dream Center.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Keiante Josie, Executive Assistant and Business Manager at United Community Centers, which is the home of 13th Avenue Dream Center and the Manatee Mustang Sports Academy. We are a nonprofit organization, we have been around actually since 1937. We have served and continue to serve generations of families. Education is our foundation, and we trickle it over into the academy, the sports academy, along with the other organizations that have their sports academy as well. We have youth that have gone on to NFL and things like that as well, and they come back. So the programs that we have, that we are continuing to partner with City of Bradenton, Bradenton Police, we also partner with Centerstone, like on this mission, where we are doing the contraband initiative and, and drug-free initiatives for our youth. We wouldn't be able to do those things without partnerships that we do have. We want to build and expand on those. We appreciate your support, your continued support. I do have some information here on our programs that I can leave, some pamphlets here, and just a little more about our history, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if everybody who...
Get the Counsel up.
And...
We'll do it.
...they brought with them. And while they're all coming up and lining up, again, I want to make sure everybody in this room knows that this is the generosity, not of the Bradenton Police Department, but the City of Bradenton, and these folks sitting up here, standing up here, that made this all possible. And, and I just want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity in this, the folks back here, the opportunity to, to do this. It's, just shows what a wonderful community we have and how generous you all are. So thank you. Come on. Sorry, you're supposed to all be coming up while I'm talking. All right, how do we want to do this?
Um, go back there, I'm going to lower this so it doesn't look like someone's eating it.
If you guys could put in a 45, just like you're doing, you can fit more people in there, it works out perfect.
Rob works part-time at Olden Mills.
Everybody knows what that is.
Sabotage.
The JCP.
Glamour shots?
Glamour shots.
Can we squeeze in a little bit?
Yeah, a little closer. Act like you like each other.
Mary Ann, you'll speech one way or the other. Sorry, excuse me.
I'll come this way. I'm sports car-abled, everybody knows it.
I'm going to take a couple. Thank you.
Yeah, heavy chair.
You need better colors.
Did you just say, "Go Gators"? Ah, you didn't realize where all... Did you just do that?
You know I go do that, do you?
Nice job, Elba.
Yeah, we need it.
Okay, we're at this time on the agenda with citizen comments.
Citizen comments will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time, and as we know that we will listen to all citizen comments, we will not respond during the citizen comment portion till after everyone is done, and if there's somebody needs help with a department head or a direction, we will get you in that direction. So, at this time, I only have two citizen comments. The first is Valerie, is it Buckhand?
Bushan.
Okay, thank you. And please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, and you'll have three minutes.
Grand rising to all of you. My name is Valerie Bushan, and I'm here today to talk about an old topic that have gone lax in this city. The house with the address of 904 Fourth Street East, Bradenton, and Deacon Sam Jennings and his wife built that house, and they lived there till they deceased. However, now the City of Bradenton want to say that it didn't exist, Fourth Street East didn't exist. I have here with me today a picture that proves that it existed. We have reached out to city councilman after city councilman to no avail, they, in AACP and other people of this great city with to no avail, even your own staff, which know that it existed. They want to say it might have been private, but I know for a fact that it is real. Fourth Street East is real, Deacon Sam Jennings delivered papers all over this city, and some of you that's old enough, y'all knowing. That's the first evidence. Those are the apartment, the houses, the little houses that was crossed from his house, and that street that runs there is Fourth Street East that adjourned, that is adjoining to 10th Avenue. Here's another picture of where, where his yard is, and he was able, you know, the house had a front to it wherein the address is 904. Now, we still get mail at this house, but we have to get it at a post office box because this city has allowed someone to build, cross the road to up in front of this, this house. So therefore, it's not a front entrance anymore. Now, the corrupt, the corrupt development that took place really should not have taken place, and since 2004.
Thank you. Let's go get through all the citizen comment, and then we'll address what, what direction to go. So, next I have, I believe it, is it Richard Thomas?
I'm right here, sir.
Okay, take your time.
Good morning, Mayor Brown.
Good morning, please state your...
My address is 904, Fourth Street East, Bradenton, Florida. I moved here from Boston in August of 1984. I was born in Boston, March 21st, 1951. I tried to work with the city. The city said, "Mr. Thomas, don't worry, we're going to take care of you." I said, "Okay." The city did not take care of me. Now, thanks to the Code Enforcement guy back there, he just gave me some good news, but I trust him, but I don't trust him. I'm going to go ahead and do it. I got a letter from the Code Department, I got maybe 18 violations. It's going to cost me $700 to do it, but he spoke to me, and we'll speak after and say, "Don't worry about it." Mayor Brown, I called you August, or May, a year ago, when my attorney, my niece and myself, met with the city manager. We was not treated with any kind of respect, rushed us out of the office, and the last comment he made to me, he turned and said to me, "You're not from Boston." Mayor Brown, you don't know how that made me feel. My mother gave me away when I was three years old. My aunt and uncle left me to stay, they took me because no one else in my family wanted me. I moved back from Boston to this property. I pay my taxes and all of that, and I begged them, "Guys, please make a situation for me. Mr. Thomas, we're going to take care of you, we're going to take care of you." And he turned around and told me to go fly a kite. I'm 72 years old, I'm handsome, I can't work anymore because I got in a bad car accident three years ago, I'm whiplashing side, you see, I can't hardly get up. I want some peace before I leave this earth. I really want some peace. And speaking of my grandfather, he do, he did work for the City of Bradenton, because when they back in the 50s and 60s, when they wanted to take stump trees down and everything, they were calling him Sam Jennings. How much will you cost to do that? But yet, the city didn't think enough of him to offer him a job. So I don't understand, and Ward 5, I'm going to say this, and hopefully I'll be, Ward 5 get treated like a third-class stamp. I done been through three, four city councilmen's. You go to them, they don't do nothing. All they can do is call you, we going to work whatever. And my niece just spoke, and she spoke basically everything, and I, and you said that, you mentioned a developed name, and you said that we trying to work something out. You said that a year ago, and I haven't heard no more from you. Now, I might drop dead the next hour, but I want you guys to know how the City of Bradenton treated me, okay? And I would never, I wouldn't treat nobody like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other cards. Obviously, as a Counsel and, and Mayor, we get a lot of inquiries, we turn them over to staff, and then I haven't heard anything in over a year, so I assumed things were being done. So, I, I think, Mr. Perry, you had something you wanted to address on that?
Sure, Mayor. I guess it was a little bit over a year ago.
Right.
I met with Mr. Tom, Thomas, and he had come in, and he, he has a certainly sympathetic case historically, but the information we had had through, I believe it was the Planning Department and perhaps Public Works, did show that this, that the property itself, there wasn't a readily available solution to it. There was also, as I remember, some mitigation about action that may have been taken by the property owner that could have been construed to, to contribute to the situation historically, backaways. It didn't go well. There was a younger female that I believe was there that represented herself as an attorney, and I did everything I could to try to explain things. Oddly enough, I was the told that I was the person not from Boston, because if I was from Boston, I would get this fixed. So it was interesting to hear that particular part, but that doesn't have anything to do with anything other than the facts of what it was stated. I can revisit this. I think it's going, going to have a similar result. I will get with planning, I can get with Public Works, they were familiar with it at the time. As you know, the situation with certain roads in this city historically from a long time ago, not being recognized as public property, other people having adjacent property rights, I don't know, I can't remember exactly what the situation was with the quote developer that was mentioned, and the like, but I remember it was a pretty clear case. And again, it was sympathetic, I was hoping we were able to do something. If there was anything I could have done, I, I would, I would have done it, but I remember the conversation going to a place where it just, it, it didn't, the reality didn't want to be heard and faced. And it is, you know, it is a situation that had gone back a long time, and, and the property character, the access point, and the like had changed, but the way it was explained to me from the plat history, the property history and the like, it really wasn't much the city could do.
Well, obviously, if you can revisit it, maybe include Mr. Rudicell to figure out the legal part of things, because obviously, it's long before any of our time, probably in this room, the family has a history, but, you know, I mean, if there's, you know, we always look at, you know, I think we probably err on the side of the citizen, but if it is what it is, unfortunately, and, and like I said, I haven't heard anything in over a year, once we got them to, together, so if you could just readdress that and see where, where if there's any other ways to understand it and explain.
Yeah, I think what I'll do this time is have witnesses, and I think there may have been someone in there with me. I might even have notes on it somewhere, frankly, but I remember it was a Friday, because I was criticized for wearing jeans to start with, and when the meeting started, I spent probably about 30, 45 minutes in my office going over there, and it got to a point where I had explained things two or three times, and it just didn't go well.
Unfortunately. All right, do we have any other comments from the Counsel? Mr. Kramer?
I do. Mr. Thomas, I'm hopeful remembers me from my previous career in the Police Department, because he would come down, and I believe he actually called us out to his house one time, to basically talk about this issue, and we couldn't find it, because it was lane-locked, and I couldn't understand how that was allowed to happen. And it created, created an issue for our officers, and we had to put it actually, I believe, in our notes, that if we had to respond there, here's how you get there. You have to go back, hop a fence, I mean, literally, hop a fence at sometimes, because I think various disputes that might have been with his neighbors, they would lock the gates, and he didn't have access to his home. I don't understand how that can happen.
Yes, this is definitely a complicated situation, and this is a historical example of how things were sometimes not done properly, but at this stage, it makes it pretty difficult to try to resolve it, but as best we can. I'm sure we will be looking at it and trying to have a solution of some, some kind.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
If we could just maybe perhaps have Mr. Thomas schedule something with Mr. Rudicell, and we can staff it with the appropriate people, because I think there are legal issues involved, and again, last time I had the meeting, there was, there was an attorney that came in.
Okay, yeah, if we can forward through that, and, and maybe...
Do you want to get the name of the attorney, if Mr. Thomas can...
Sure, that may be a good idea. If Mr. Thomas could perhaps get with...
Who do you want to get with? Shelley, maybe?
Yeah, if Shelley can get the contact information from Mr. Thomas and, and the attorney, if the attorney is still representing Mr. Thomas and the like, so that we can get them both in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments for the Counsel before we move on to consent agenda? Seeing none, we're at consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Staff would like to pull Item C, please.
Okay.
To bring forward at a later date, so we're requesting approval of Items A, B, and D through M.
That's correct, Mayor. Item Number C, City Administration Recognition Reward for our APG 3013 EJ Strategic Strategic Planning Services. We want to take a look at the scope and further consider the language of the RFP and examine, you know, what our, the solicitation, our invitation to respond to ensure that this is exactly the types of service that we need.
Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion for A, B, and then D through M, with C being pulled for a later date discussion.
Send it.
So we have Ms. Coker. Is there a second? Ms. Coachman, okay. All right, any other discussion?
Mayor, I have had the opportunity to speak with all councilors regarding the agenda as well as yourself, and have taken each and every comment and concern and inquiry into account. There were several, there's a few items on there, particularly the budget adjustment request that was fairly complicated. And I spent some time trying to explain the year-end closeout nature of that particular rather lengthy budgetary item. So I just thought I'd put that on the record, and I appreciate every council helping me kind of coordinate that the last couple of days. I have had a little bit of a hectic changing schedule, and I appreciate it.
Good. No, thank you to everybody. So we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. And I'm just gonna make one comment from the, from my standpoint too, and I think it's something great. And to the clerk's office and Shelley and everyone that's involved. And, you know, we're keeping up very well with our minutes now, you know, when some things change. It took a little longer at times, but, but our minutes are right up to almost where we are, so, to get in there and get approved. So, you know, the transparency in what we do for the citizens is, is out there if you want it. And if you need help finding it, we'll even help you find it if somebody wants it. So, great job to everybody on that, so. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance four zero one six. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part One, Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B, Related Laws, Article Four, Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida. Amending Section Four, Finances and Fund Management, Establishment and Operation of Funds. Amending Section Seven, Pre-Retirement Death. Amending Section Sixteen, Minimum Distribution of Benefits. Amending Section Twenty-seven, Military Service Prior to Employment. Amending Section Twenty-eight, Prior Police Service. Amending Section Thirty, Supplemental Benefit Component for Special Benefits. Chapter one eight-five, Share Accounts, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date.
Do we have any staff presentation? Or I know there's a letter from Attorney Christiansen in the actual hearing report, which, obviously, he was an attorney that's been involved even when I was on the, some of the boards in the nineties. And so been a longtime attorney with the city for those with the police and fire pensions, so. Any other comments?
I don't know if Mr. Christiansen is present or...
No.
Or I don't see him. I know sometimes you're married.
He does come, right, but I don't see him here, so. Why don't we go to the public hearing, and then we can, if there's any council comments, so. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would move to approve Ordinance forty sixteen as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kramer. All right, any other discussion? And once again, everybody has been briefed and had the opportunity to go through everything, so. Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Okay, approve five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Item six B is the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance four zero one nine. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter fifty-four, Article One, to add a new Section fifty-four dash fifteen, Storage of Personal Property. Prohibiting the storage of personal property on public property, including public rights-of-way and private property without approval of owner. Providing for removal and/or disposal of personal property in violation of Section fifty-four dash fifteen. Providing for exemptions to Section fifty-four dash fifteen. Providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Mr. Rudicell, do you have anything on this through the legal?
Well, this is an ordinance. It prohibits the storage of personal property within public right-of-way. Provides for notice to be provided to the folks before they were, would ever be cited. So on a first, on a first violation, they would get, they would get notice, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't have the potential to be cited until after they were given that notice and given twenty-four hours. I want to thank Paul Driscoll at the police department. He did a lot of work on this ordinance as well. And happy to answer any questions. The council may have.
Any questions?
I...
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. It, it speaks of removing the prop, the prop, personal effects and storing them somewhere under some conditions. Where would it be stored?
I'm guessing that would be in the PD, that they would have a, a storage area where they would, where they would keep that. And then, you know, they would, you'd provide a, a notice where the property was, so that the person, if they went back there, would know, you know, where it was, if they could come to retrieve it.
The whole goal is give them an opportunity to come get it, but if they don't, gives them a timeframe to dispose of it, because some of the property that we're talking about is not in very good condition.
Right, yes. And, and how would you, you'd leave a notice for them?
Yeah, it'd be some, some way with, mostly with our community policing. And, and again, trying to work with people, but also giving the city opportunity for the business owners to have a better opportunity to work within their business too.
Timely manner, get it.
Yes, yes. No, it was, it was an ordinance that, that I believe that, that was very well thought out, but also giving everybody opportunity to succeed. But if you don't take it, then we have opportunity to, to help the surrounding area and businesses.
I agree. Well written.
No, that's a good question. It's a great question. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coker.
Just so I understand, so if somebody leaves something on public, on public right-of-way, then we have to store it until, for a length of time, or we can't just dispose of it?
Yeah, mostly it's certain conditions, and we've had some stuff left for weeks. And it just, it's, you've got to have an ordinance to be able to take care of it properly.
Right.
Well, take care of it properly, is that disposing of it then?
Well, if it's, depending on the condition it's in, and, you know, if it's in bad condition, it needs to be disposed of and/or. But, but again, still giving people opportunity.
Okay, so thirty days, okay. Okay.
All right, so let me open the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance forty nineteen, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Coachman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item six C is the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance four zero two zero.
I may have misspoken. I'm looking at this. Under C, it says Ordinance twenty forty, and I move to approve forty nineteen, which we've already, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm wrong. I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
I apologize. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Can you note that, please?
I'm sorry, what?
No, don't repeat it.
All right, moving on, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter fifty-four, Article One, to add a new Section fifty-four dash seven, Signs in the Public Rights-of-Way. Prohibiting the placement of signs in the public rights-of-way, providing for exemptions, providing for removal, and disposal of signs. Providing for penalties, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Mr. Rudicell?
I guess this is our second ordinance today, aimed at cleaning up the, the city's rights-of-way. Signage in the rights-of-way is, is already prohibited under the, under the city's code. This goes a little bit further in that it, it allows the city to cite not only the person who placed the sign, but also the person for whose benefit the sign exists. So if you see the signs that say, you know, "We buy property," and a phone number is on it, and that's in the right-of-way, code enforcement will be calling that phone number, and, and now they will be able to cite whoever it is that is, that is benefiting from that, from that signage. The other thing that the ordinance does, it allows the city to recover the costs of removing and disposing of the signs. So in addition to being cited, you could be assess those, those costs as well, so.
I think also, it, you know, we've seen over the years where during all times, whether it's nonpolitical or political, that people just drop signs by the hundreds. And it just helps code enforcement have an opportunity to get, and again, it's more about, if somebody has one sign out there and it just accidentally got put in the wrong spot, they're gonna say, "Don't do it again." But if somebody has hundreds of a sign and they just keep doing it, there's consequences if you don't do it correctly. But we're also still gonna try to work with them. I know Mr. Reese always tries to help people before he wants to just automatically go to penalty, so. I think it's a good thing, and I think it moves our city forward, because you really hear from people that sometimes we look like we got a lot of trash out there, and signs are part of that, so. In the right-of-way, you know, and we have signed ordinances not in the right-of-way to do things, so. Any other comments by council before we go to public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
To that point, I, I don't know if you all received comments, but I did receive a couple of comments about the recently passed ordinance prohibiting flag-type signage. And so staff was kind to give me some time to try to work through whether or not we were dealing with unintended consequences and whether or not we had to revisit. You know, what, I appreciate the trying to clean up and whatnot, but just to the extent that it might affect certain types of businesses. But I think that perhaps it's already, you know, that, I don't know if you would like to speak to it, but I think that it's been somewhat resolved in confirming that businesses can still place things like A-frame signage on the sidewalk in front of their business and that sort of thing. To the extent that we don't want to clutter, but also to permit them to do things like offer specials or let them, let people know they're open and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I think we're, we're talking a lot more about right-aways and medians and things that...
I think it just takes some clarification.
If you have a business property and you're somewhere on your property, there's different ways to do things. And I don't think this really is only that.
Right.
And, and again, we have rules, and one of the things that, that, because I did get several phone calls, and I ask them to come and talk to us here if they can and public comment. But one of the things that we did years ago, and I was the only one up here when that happened, is we were having a lot of issues with people putting them right out up against the road, and it was safety issues and some of the flags. And, and we know how interesting our borders are with the county, and I think that would be something that we might want to address in the future, what you're talking about, on specific business properties, that how we work with the county to try to come up with the same thing. Because if we have a rule that you can't put, what do they call that guy that blows up and down and does all that? It's actually going into the roadway and all that, but the county doesn't, and they can do it right across the street. It doesn't seem fair, but it's two different jurisdictions.
Right.
So I think there's some opportunity to probably work with the county on some of that in the future, so.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm not sure if this, I mentioned that I wanted to include it, but we never passed an ordinance on the flags. But I would like to address that at some point.
We have an ordinance on, are you talking about the...
Those tall things that, there, there is a, someone that is not even on Fifty-Ninth that has eight flags on Fifty-Ninth Street.
In the right-of-way.
Well, I don't know if it's in the, I, I can't tell that.
I think...
And so I think it's, there are people who take it too far. And I just think when you drive down our major arteries, the flags, the sandwich boards, all of that can be, I think it detracts from our appearance. And, I mean, I'm not trying to hamper anyone's business that has specials on their sandwich board in front of their, on the sidewalk. But I just, I'm just talking about that appearance on our major arteries with the flags and, and all that. So, but that's not even covered in this.
Right, it was just something I wanted to bring up because of what we did at the last meeting, and then I was getting the phone calls, and then we're continuing to try to put some teeth into code enforcement. So it was really more of a conversation point. I, I agree that I'm, I appreciate wanting to remove the clutter for the main arteries and, and make it look a little tidier, for sure. But I just wanted to be sensitive when we're doing that to maybe smaller outfits that are not, in particular, the one that was concerning to me was, they weren't a destination. So if you, you'd think to yourself, "I'm going to go to this establishment today," you might pop in if you were in the area. And so to that point, it just, it seemed to me like it was difficult to have like a one, one-size-fits-all type rule. But I think I'm okay at this point with it, because I think that there are alternatives, and Ms. Singer can speak to that and how she was able to help this person.
Yeah, I think what this ordinance allows us to do, we've already been enforcing and pulling up signs that are located in the right-of-way, but the problem is, is that without a penalty, they just keep putting them back out there. So this ordinance will allow us a more immediate penalty to stop that from happening from the people who, as the city attorney said, actually benefit from the signs. And the first line of the ordinance is something to the effect of notwithstanding other allowances for signs in the right-of-way. And there is something that allows the A-frame signs in our sign code to be on a sidewalk. So we're not stopping people from being able to do that. It's more, and it's not just the flags and banners, it's all the snipe signs that get put out there. So this just allows us, it's already prohibited. It allows us a greater penalty to get back at that. The other kinds of signs that are located on private property, there, there's already prohibitions for that. We are working towards that, and some of the complaints you're receiving had to do probably more with that enforcement than, than with this ordinance. So what we're trying to do is clean things up out there. It's my perception, I, I wasn't here before the pandemic, but probably there was a little bit of latitude given, just so that people would know that businesses were open during the pandemic, because it was anybody's guess probably at that point. So we're just trying to tighten up things, and I think the causeway, to some degree, is driving this as well, because we're trying to clean up the causeway and the extra signage that people are putting out beyond what they're permitted to do, which is really just whatever they have on their vehicle. So with that, I think that's part of the reason that you're hearing this, and, and this ordinance will not prohibit the continuation of the A-frame signs in the right-of-way, so.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby had a question first.
Well, and thank you, Ms. Singer, because you brought up the point that, that I thought needed to be made, which was during the pandemic and right after the pandemic, the, the city was trying to be supportive of businesses that may have had issues with people not knowing, are they open, are they not open? And we allowed things to occur that, under regular circumstances, we would have been out there and said, "No, you can't. This is not allowed." So this is one of those things where no good deed goes unpunished. Because you were allowed to do something in a pandemic situation, and now we're starting to enforce the rules that we already had on the books. Again, it's, it's no good deed goes unpunished. We were trying to be sensitive to the fact that we wanted businesses to be successful. We wanted people to know that those businesses were open. But it has proliferated to the point now where it's just, it's like mushrooms after the spring rain, and we're going to have to get a handle on it.
Yeah, and I will say that we do coordinate efforts with the county, so we can go along Cortez and along Manatee, get both sides of the street. Sounds like Fifty-Ninth is also an issue we need to get out there. But we'll coordinate those efforts to make sure that we're doing both sides the same. There is a provision for grand opening signs, but there really isn't for, and I, and I wouldn't recommend any changes that would allow for moving signs, but if at some point in the future you're hearing from people they want something more than a grand opening sign, we could look at provisions in the code for banners, temporary signage, that would be legitimate, and maybe just a banner that's attached to the building. But I wouldn't recommend more than that. I think the motion waiving signs provide a distraction and need to go away, so.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Yes, I, you might have answered my question right at the table.
Microphone? Microphone?
I'm sorry. You might have answered my question right at the tail. It's motion distracting signs? I was wondering what you call what the mayor was describing with the motion.
Yeah, I think those are motion distracting signs. But we really don't really have a lot of allowance for temporary signs other than the A-frames and grand opening signs. We don't have a lot that's allowed to begin with. But yeah.
Can we use those on personal property? Probably no, right?
No, I'm looking at Volker just to confirm. No, you can't. They shouldn't be having even on private property.
Right. I see them frequently. McDonald's down at what is it 67th, I think? Yeah, that's true. That's true. But along Manatee Ave, I see them in a lot of locations. And I think in talking with some counselors over the last six months or whatever that we've been addressing this, and I know we've been addressing a lot longer, those signs are particular particularly kind of causing some some strife and concern by some of the counselors. And I was just wondering if we addressed that specifically in our sign ordinance or right of way ordinances that deal with that. I mean, obviously, it can't be in a right of way, I wouldn't think. But half the time I see them, they're right on the corner of a right of way.
And I think also you've seen a lot going up Manatee Ave and Cortez Road that get in very disrepair and they just leave them. So I think that may bring up some of it, you know. But again, that's where, like I said, I would like. I know we work with the county going out and we did a lot where we drove together. And they have the GIS system that kind of tells a little better location wise. But I think it'd be good to maybe look at some of the ordinances that they have and we have and obviously try to figure out if we can match them a little better. Because if it's just across the street, well, they can do it because they're in the county and I can't. So it seems unfair, even though, you know, it may be the ordinance of the law. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
One final question. It actually just occurred to me, so I haven't asked it before. I wonder if we should do any kind of educational effort because I think the thing that the businesses struggle with is that by the time they've already purchased it and put it out there when then they're told that to comply, they have to remove it. And I understand that can be expensive. So I don't know. And I know it's been on the books, but I don't know what, you know, like it feels new to people, I think. It's the sense I'm getting. So I don't know if there's something that we could do to kind of educate people a little bit that we are enforcing this. Please do not buy flag signs.
And it may not be as, you know, I agree with you on it feels new to people. But technology has gotten so much better and the signs are a lot less expensive. So people are able to reach them where before, if you had to pay $700 for something, you wouldn't do it. But if you can order it online for $82, you take that chance. So I agree with you on that. So, yeah.
And I and I think we can do that. We can notify business along the corridor and let them know.
All right. Thank you. All right. We've got a public hearing we need to open. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. The chair will entertain a motion. On ordinance 4020.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 4020.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Item 6D is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance 4021, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B Related Laws, Article III Firefighters Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section I Definitions, amending Section IV Finances and Fund Management, amending Section VII Pre-Retirement Death, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay. Obviously, we've had a letter from Attorney Christensen. Next, early report, and it's been discussed. Any comments from the council before we go to public hearing? All right. Seeing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would move for approval of ordinance 4021 as presented.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. And second by Ms. Coachman. Any other comment? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item 6E is the first reading of ordinance 4022, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 42, Article I, II, and III relating to the fire prevention and protection, revising Chapter 42, Article I, II, and III to remove duplicative language from the Florida Fire Prevention Code and to clean up language and code numbers to allow easier reading and understanding of Chapter 42, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading in public hearing for ordinance 4022 will be October 11th.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or set the date for October 11th? Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk.
Next, we have item 7A Resolution Number 2380, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida, adopting an amended functional organizational chart, providing for repeal of resolutions in conflict and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Perry?
Mayor, counsel. This is the last organizational chart that we'd had approved was when I had come in and I think it was right around the first budget period, September of 2021.
Mr. Perry, do you mind speaking a little more in the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I'm having a I'm having I've got a sinus thing going on. I'm having a hard time hearing you, and I apologize.
Very good.
Your voice is surprisingly soft today.
Yeah, I've never I've never been told that. Surprisingly. Thank you. This is after the last chart that we had, organizational chart, was a couple of years back. And we've been examining for the purposes of efficiency and project management, program management and the like, some of the best alignments. This is a fairly minor change in alignment where it basically substitutes the chief operating officer in exchange for what was previously on the organizational chart as a assistant city manager. A prior position of assistant city manager, our individual that filled that did a great job and and obviously had good skills and and made good contributions to the city. But what we've realized since since the separation and his departure is that currently, we have a lot going on at the city. And and really what that is, is project management, program management, and personnel management, those types of things. And we're we're suggesting here, and and Mr. Williams has ascended into that position on my behalf to fill that position of chief operating officer because he has those skills to be able to do the the triple header there, which is which is project, personnel, and program management. It's there's a lot going on at the city. I don't think I need to tell you in the various departments, the divisions within the departments, the enterprises we run, the the construction projects we're doing, the public works will have in different divisions, the planning and community development, Acela Technology Advancements, some of the revisions to the code that we dealt with today, administrative services, human resources and the like. And it's it's a lot for any one person as a city manager, city administrator. And I think this really represents a good division of labor with the right people in the right spots for the work that is ahead of us, that's with us currently as well as ahead of us with some of our project and program management in particular. We've got five, six, seven major vertical construction projects. One of the underground projects and and water treatment projects that was on the agenda today is a $20 million project that was the SRF loan for water treatment and and lining and the like that Mr. McClellan shop does and the like. But I don't know, because I've only been here two years, but I don't I'm kind of told from folks that have been around a lot longer that we probably haven't faced that much activity all at the same time.
I can guarantee that.
Yeah. And so that's that's the predicate for that. And I'm asking for indulgence for for myself to try to conduct the proper alignments. The other position that is on this org chart that is added and and a change is the digital media, marketing events, and public information specialists. And that deals a lot with our public communications, our community communications and outreach for the events we do, for use of social media, you know, a whole host of other communication medians, as well as spot news and public information that Ms. Roberts has done a good job with. And there's we've realized we're doing more and there's a volume of work that needs to be supplemented. We think there's a, you know, there's definitely a salary savings there by moving Mr. Williams into the position. I think everybody's worked with Mr. Williams. And and he's shown his his capacity, his ability, his skill sets and the like, and his longstanding history with the city, coming up through UB and ultimately administration. And I enjoy working with him, and I think he's very responsive. I got a busy hallway. I see who comes and goes, just like you do. And I'm glad to see you guys you all coming and going. And between the division of labor to get you the information you need, but allow us to do the operations, allow you to do the policy, it works well.
One of the things I wanted to stress, too, in my opinion, is that this is an org chart. You take the names out of it and you make the org chart. And then you fill it even with people that are here now. But if that individual was no longer employed by the city, you included, that we would be able to fill it and still operate the city in the direction. So an org chart is important to have the direction of what we need for the city.
Right.
And then it's good people in it. So.
It is, but you and I can appreciate this one. If you got if you got a lot of talent on your football team that's good at running the ball, you set that team up to run the ball.
For the football, right.
Right. And and vice versa, if it's passing the ball or defense or whatever. Part of the the kind of more subtle evaluation that I have to do is what is our bandwidth and how is it best utilized? And and I think this does do that with the boxes, as you say, but also considering the talents, the skill sets, the abilities of the people that we have in them. And and I think we have really good people in the right places.
And I totally agree with that.
And Jim Shop, Hugh Shop, the same thing. I think that he does a really good, you know, good job at trying to do that. And we're always trying to improve it.
And set us up for the future if we need to.
Yes, sir.
Want because everybody can't be there forever. Ms. Moore, you have a question?
I did. And I'm sorry we didn't have a chance to chat about it. It actually didn't occur to me when we met. Is there any magic to why we are calling the new role Chief Operating Officer, Chief Operating Officer instead of Assistant City Administrator?
I don't think there's magic. But but I think I think a lot of what we do is operations, you know. And and Assistant City Administrator, sure, that's generic title administrator. What do you do? I'm an assistant. I'm a I'm an administrator. I need people that are operators that come to work at eight and they make sure our operations are going smoothly, that when the trash doesn't get delivered, they can call Mr. McClellan and deal with Mr. Cho and get things solved. When the projects aren't coming in a timely manner, they can go to the architect meeting and say, you know, we got a lot of money into this and and this is what the timeline looks like. We need it done. I think it provides more direct that term and more direct definition of hands-on management. That's probably the best way I can describe it. And that's one of my strengths is I like being a walk-around, hands-on manager. I don't like having a fancy title.
More accurately reflects the responsibility.
I think so. And I apologize that I didn't explain it a little bit more succinctly.
Vice Mayor Coker?
Yeah, I remember when we were working for several meetings on that flow chart. And the discussion at the time, it was prior to hiring our administrator, that he would be able to tweak it when he came in. And so I think we leave it to him to do that. And I.
So is that a motion?
Sure is.
To approve Resolution 2380 by Ms. Coker?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. And we've had discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We do not have any other new business on the agenda or unfinished business.
All right. Counsel reports, and that'll go to Ward one to start.
I can do that.
First, I'd like to offer condolences to the families and friends of. We've had two long-term members of this community that have passed this just recently. Gretchen Platt, who was very involved with helping our with several projects at Kiwanis, and she was a beloved member at Christ Episcopal Church. And I'm sure her she's going to be very missed. And also Louise Josie of Josie's Posies. If you've lived here for very long, I'm sure you've had been bright had your day brightened by some Josie's Posies. And she recently passed, and that's a big loss to our community. It's sad to see her go. So my condolences to the family. I also I just wanted to reiterate the grant awards that we gave out today. I mean, they're like little pebbles that we throw into the water, but the ripple effect, I I just feel really good about it. And I want to thank the chief for all that. And then down to business. I recently went to the estuary board meeting. And I forwarded on I I tried to forward on. I've been trying to be better about forwarding on all of the emails that I get on the water quality and everything. But this and I think I filed forward this on. But I just wanted to highlight that they got a final report out of the status of the bay, and they did a big study on the seagrasses. Because that that the one that I think if you they picked the one thing that that affects the water quality the most was the loss of the seagrass due to the red tide events. And they are they're very excited that they're seeing a lot of recovery. It's all young, but it's lush. And they're excited about seeing the numbers next year. So they feel they're very that they feel very promising, but yet I think pleasantly surprised that it is definitely coming back. And this is new grass that's coming on its own. It's not grass that's been because they've been trying to do some transplanting as well. But this is actually new grass coming back. So I think a lot of the efforts that are being bade are having an effect.
And Ms. Coker, on that, the Water Keepers is very involved in that study, from what I understand.
Yeah, they I I know that that the technical, the the science people. There are three parts to this estuary board. I sit on the policy board. I think we somebody from the city attends as on the the technical advisory, and and then there's a citizens advisory board. So I I think the Water Keepers. I know that one of the Water Keepers does sit on the citizens advisory board, but I think they're very involved.
Because we as a board have as a council have heard things from others about why something should change or not change. And we see that the bay, especially our Palmasola Bay, is healthier than it's been in a long time, even with some of the things that are happening there. And Water Keepers has been a part of that in some of the studies with Sarasota Bay, which if there was a problem, they'd be letting us know that, too.
Well, I I felt like I was tasked to go and address the possibility of testing the water to see if it was horse that, you know, to see if they found horse excrement. And I reiterated with Dave Tomasco, I think his email kind of insinuated it. But he felt that even if we went to the expense of doing that test, we would not be able to determine between horse, animal, or or dog or human. And he didn't he didn't feel I did I. He did. I mean, he we we would be wasting our money to do that. We'd be better off putting our money into vertical oyster gardens somewhere if we're if the whole thing is about water quality.[1782.81] if the whole thing is about water quality. Because even if they found the evidence, we wouldn't be able to say exactly where it came from. So, uh, just, I did go back to him with that and reiterate on that. Then also, um, they, we just passed, it's the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there's quite a bit of money that, that is going into the estuary program. And there are two programs, they're Manatee County, but that affects us. One of them that, and we've got a groundbreaking coming up soon, that's going to be for a redesign and restoration of, Jim, I'm sure could address this a lot better than I can, but the stormwater ponds over there at GT Bray. And then they're, they've got a pretty big $600,000 budget for Rose Park, which is a small park located in Palmasola Park, that, and they're going to break the seawall down and do a living shoreline. And that, right there, there's a pipe that is the stormwater coming into the bay, which that's probably where a lot of the pollution that you get in Palmasola Bay comes from. It's that first flush after the rains and everything. So anyhow, there's lots going on, but it's a lot of good news as well. And that's my report.
Thank you. Ward two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had had several people contact me because they're watching the replays of our meetings on M E T V, and I've had requests to remind everyone when they are up here or up at the podium to speak into the microphone. It's, and I, I went and watched a meeting, and yes, if the microphone's back, like, does no good. So I'm just passing on a request from citizens for that. And I, there's an upcoming event that I'm, I'm working on, and if you'll just allow me, I want to have just a little bit of fun this morning. I know that Councilman Kramer probably knows most of these answers, but Mr. Mayor, you may know some of them. So, who was the first Heisman Trophy winner for Florida State University?
Winky?
No.
Charlie Ward.
Charlie Ward. Okay, what year did FSU win its first national championship?
1993, with Charlie Ward.
You're, you're not even going to try, or you're just sitting there like, I mean, they're gonna, somebody's going to take your man card, come on. All right, yes, 19...
The fan answered.
Okay, 1993 with, with Charlie Ward. Okay, here's a little different one. Who is the FSU player that the college award for outstanding receiver is named for?
I'll let you take this one. I know it's...
Belitnikov?
Belitnikov.
I would have been right to, just so you know, but I'm not going to step on any man.
And then number four, everyone knows that Burt Reynolds was a famous actor at Florida State University. There is another famous, at least one other famous actor from Florida State. Can you name one of them?
Robert Urric.
Paul Withers.
Yep, Robert Urric. Yes, he, he did play football like...
Joe Canaan.
Yeah, Joe Canaan, as a famous actor?
No, but a famous person from, who played at Florida State.
That's true. That is true.
Paul Withers played there?
I bring, I'll have to, I'll have to double check.
Paul Creve.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I bring all this up to say that the Floridas, the, the Manatee Seminole Club is going to be doing an FSU trivia night on September the 30th at Godson's Pizza, and all of the monies that we raise with our, with this, the Manatee Club goes to support scholarships for local students that are going to FSU. So, again, trivia night, September 30th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Godson's Pizza. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, you might know some of the answers, so you, you might have some fun there.
Just wait till my report tasks my question.
Alrighty, and that's, that's...
I have a feeling it's going to involve a score.
I do too.
It's probably going to, a score, an obscure player, I don't know, Mr. Two Bits, I mean, and yes, I know the opening line of, of your song that you sing at the fourth quarter, so...
I won't back down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Barnby, for bringing the fun. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, more fun, next Tuesday, the 3rd, at St. Stevens, they're having ribbon cutting for the steam center. We, uh, they came in front of us back, I think, late, late spring to adjust some of the property rights there. But, um, yeah, they're finally able to break ground. So the ribbon cutting for that is, I believe we all were invited, I hope to see some of you there. Uh, I want to congratulate and thank Joel King. He was a longtime manager and pro at Pine Brook Ironwood Golf Club. He retired, I think he retired on August 31st, but that was right when the hurricane was coming, so it might have been extended a little bit. But, um, he was a longtime supporter of the police department, instituted golf leagues for us, and, uh, longtime, longtime supporter. He also did a lot for veterans services, a lot of golf tournaments there at the course. So he'll be missed, certainly in the community. I don't know, I believe he went to school with Ed Kish, they were in middle school together. So that's how he sort of started to love us. Uh, again, thank you to the chief for the forfeiture grants. Have a really nice job on saying more than 25%. But thank you, Elba, because she's the one who helps manage everything, gets all the paperwork together, and helps, as the chief was saying, through the, it's a grant, so through the year, we, there are certain standards that the police department makes the awardees live up to. So, uh, thank you again, Elba. That's all I got.
Mr. Kramer, I think we have an opportunity with the new owner of Ironwood Pine Brook Golf Course to, to do some things that will continue the relationship with the city being kind of the only one in the heart, we, then we have our golf course. But I think, um, he, I actually got a text from him this morning talking about maybe we can highlight some things and, and show people that that course is a jewel we have right in the middle.
It is. Best screens in town.
There's great opportunity to continue that relationship and, and even strengthen it as the years goes on, as we know golf has changed a lot. And since COVID, it's actually came back a little bit, so...
Big time. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
I forgot something. Do you want me to wait till the end or go now? Okay.
Ms. Coachman? Or wait, wait. Ms. Moore.
I was like, is he messing?
I want to say Ms. Moore till last, because of my comments. Off of that thing she said, we'll get, we'll get it, we'll get it back.
Um, I, um, I, this was not something that I was going to mention, but just to, um, to, not address, but like to respond to the, the information that you're sending out from the Tampa Bay, it's the Tampa Bay Estuary. It's been great and useful. I think that the science, you know, is important. So I, my take on it is, is it's going to come down to being a policy issue, because people in the community seem to be so divided. And maybe I might suggest that we include that in our visioning and our strategic planning when we get to that point. You know, maybe that's a topic that we ask people, you know, the, the area, what they want or how they feel about it, just a suggestion. I don't know if you, you, do you, I don't know if you wanted to have thoughts on that or...
Uh...
I mean, we don't have to debate the horse thing now. I just thought we could maybe include that with what we were eventually going to be doing in the way of visioning or whatnot. Because I think it sounds like the science is going to make it just be a policy decision. Are we going to permit it or not? You know what I mean? That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if the reason that you're, I mean, I don't know if you want me to opine on this now, but if the reason you want to stop it is based on the water quality...
Right.
I, I just don't think that that's the reason to do it.
Right.
Now, my personal opinion is there are small businesses and, you know, it's the last place in the state of Florida that someone can do that. And I think, I like leaving it to the public to be able to give everyone a chance to interact with our public water the way they want to, and, um, I'm, I don't ride horses. Exactly. I, I, I'm not going to ever be on one of those horses, but I think everyone should ever, should have an opportunity, so...
Yeah, I, I agree with you that I think that the science is, is sounding like that's not, you know, the, the reason for not having it. So then you have to ask, well, do we do anything about it then, or, you know, what? Basically, I was saying, let's push it to the community and see what their thoughts were and what the, if we can get to a consensus. That was where I was going with that, because I appreciate the science that you have been sharing.
Mm-hmm.
So that was just a little suggestion there. The things I was going to report on were, um, I had the pleasure of, it's kind of, they're, they kind of overlap each other. I had the pleasure spending a couple of hours with Kim Richmond, who is the director of the 26 West Center on the S E F campus. It's basically programming to encourage small, new small business owners, entrepreneurs, get educated, create life, or work with life coaches to create, um, business plans and whatnot. They were just received a grant to do a year-long pr, program where they do their coaching and their training, but then they plant these entrepreneurs in the downtown area specifically. So I was very appreciative of her time and her enthusiasm for working towards making our downtown an area that is receptive to a variety of small businesses, especially, you know, younger, new, um, entrepreneurs. I think that's something that should be encouraged, and I'm excited about her efforts, and, and I encourage anyone to go spend time with her, because she will get you very excited about revamping our downtown. So I was just going to let everyone know that I did that. And then, um, the other thing was, I feel like that dovetails into how much I enjoyed my time with the folks who are working on the conceptual design for, um, the, the property that we are sitting on right now. Um, I thought it was a really productive meeting with them, and I felt very engaged. So it just left me, again, all last week was, I'm super excited about what is happening in downtown and more to come, because it was a very, you know, initial meeting with them about what our thoughts were as far as, um, design and the concept and what we kind of want to do with it. But I just will report that, at least for my meeting, I, you know, I hope y'all felt the same, but mine was, I thought, productive, engaging, and positive.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman?
Just to kind of just add to that, yes, it was, um, it was great to have a developer care to hear, you know, from us individually, as well as knowing that we're representing the, the public. And so it was great that they want to make sure they understand. And I wanted to make another comment also on the water quality and so forth. With the science, it may say to us, eh, that's not really a problem, the horses and so forth. But it's still, as far as I, I see it, yes, those businesses have the opportunity, should have the opportunity to function, but seems like if there is a way to reduce the impact, whether it's within guidelines or not, you know, it seems like if there was some effort though, to at least try to minimize the impact of horse manure in water, and, you know, as we're trying to do all the other things, like, you know, grow the seagrass and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, um, is it fall, or is it still summer? I, I looked on the calendar the other day, I was like, it's fall. That's usually my favorite time of the year, when I was living north. But anyway, no, just happy our weather is fine and all that good stuff, it's great to be in Florida. I want to also piggyback on some, some comments that were made about the, uh, the distribution of the grants and how important that is to help these organizations that are doing so much for the, for the county, and especially the youth. I, you know, I work with middle school students, and I see the trouble. I see the difficulty in, in growing up now, as in 11 to 14, 15 years old. So it's just awesome that we have that opportunity to us spread some help. It was great to attend the retreat, the conference retreat by the Chamber. It was my very first, even though I've had three opportunities to go, I find it three ti, the third time's the charm, I guess. It was quite informative, I'm glad I went, and I'm looking forward to next year. Earlier, we had a citizen, and I, you know how I feel about, it's so important for citizens to come to us and, and share their concerns, good, bad, or indifferent, it's, you know, we, we, we need that, and we welcome that. But Mr. Thomas and Ms. Bouchard have been, they have contacted us over a year ago, and, and I know we will do all we can if there's something that can be done. So just to, to let the public know that we have not ignored that situation, it's just quite complicated. And sometimes you can't go back and, and fix things that were done 25, 30 years ago. So, um... Oh, I've had a lot of concerns from citizens over the past week about the F dot proposals on trying to eliminate some of the traffic that's going through, uh, the county, through the city mainly. So a lot of people are really ups, I'll say concerned. So, and I've, I've said that there's more to come, there's some meetings that are put in place, so just mindful, and you're on the NPO, yeah. So we just have to stay mindful that we keep them informed so that we can ease some of that anxiety. I've also had a lot of calls about speeding in the neighborhood streets. Is there any way we could, just like you were talking about, informing the businesses about the flags and so forth, is there a way that we can send out, uh, some information to the public explaining why we can't do speed bumps? Because that's usually what they say. Why can't you do speed bumps? And I'm like, well, we can't. So, you know, I, I, I don't know if in some areas, in fact, on my street, the, the speed limit signs are gone. I, I don't know where they are. So it's like, maybe we might want to take a look at those streets that are missing some, you know, s, speed limit signs, and maybe that might jog the memory of some people. And I don't know how possible it is to put some of those speed detector things, but anyway.
I think, and, and I'll go to the speed, because, you know, obviously, over the years in Ward two, when I was councilman for that, we would put out, and then we would do some speed areas, or, uh, have the police out there, and 90% of the people that get tickets, and I may be off a little bit on the numbers, but the majority of the people are the neighbors that get the tickets. So, you know, so you, you go, and then they get mad because, well, why are you doing this? Well, because neighbors are complaining, so that's important. But no, anything, I know the chief will do anything in areas, and I know, I think we probably need to do an evaluation of the whole city, um, the way some of our signs look, and I know that's more work, but you, you got some speed signs that the, says speed limit, and the, the three is there, but the, whatever else is supposed to be there, the zero or the five has worn off in some areas.
Change the three and put five.
Yeah, something, so, yep, so no, that's, that's a good observation. One of the things I do want to say, um, obviously with Mr. Thomas, I mean, they said something to me that I heard differently today than I had heard a year and a couple months ago, was that the post office doesn't even recognize the address now. If I understood that correctly, they said they have to have a P O box because the post office doesn't address it.
They can't deliver it.
So, well, there's no address to deliver to, and so I think, you know, again, you can, we can do as much as we can, but if it's not there, it's not there unfortunately. So I know that we can still try to see if there's another way, but, but if it's not there, it's not there. And that's unfortunately, you know, it's unfortunate that we can't make something that's not there. So, yeah.
I can rest assured that...
We've looked into it.
Doing, yeah, doing it.
Yeah. Talking about, obviously, our police grants, um, you know, very important to what we do, and then that money can be used in different ways, or less money, but, you know, what Elba and the police department group does is, is great. And I, what I like about it is, you know, you have the opportunity to apply, and we give it out to a number of groups, not just one big check to one group. So it's, it's helping a lot of kids in different ways. The Chamber, obviously, you know, years ago, um, the city was having no representation, um, and we started going, and I was very proud that, you know, we were there, the county was there, because our business leaders in this community see when government's engaged, business gets more engaged, and vice versa. So that is a great, um, event to go to, because we are hearing more and engaging people that are very important in our, uh, whole community, and, you know, wanting to bring more business downtown, which will help all of our citizens. So, so that's very important. Going back to the bay, you know, I agree with Ms. Going back to the Bay, you know, I agree with Ms. Coker, spend tens of thousands of dollars to do a study when they already have the studies, you know, and we can go back to history and see, and they're, I did ask Mr. Tomosco to go back and see as far back as they can find so we can see, because we know that the north side of Palmasola Bay is a non-functioning road system. Because when they did that, and I was on the Sarasota Bay for several years, they had planned it for two bridges, one at the beginning, one at the end, so you'd have a circulation. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, DOT only put one in the middle. Well, there's no circulation. So some of those numbers could be exactly what they were today, ten years ago, twenty years ago. But when you see that the actual bay is getting healthier, you know, and again, what I heard, and I've talked to Mr. Tomosco many times, is that it could be the jet skis, it could be the people mowing their yard and blowing the fertilizer off the grass clippings, it could be the boats that the owners of the property around it do, it could be what's coming from by De Soto Mall, the drain that comes through there, because that's where it empties out. So I agree to spend tens of thousands of dollars to find a study that's not gonna tell us much different, and, you know, we've had a very small percentage of individuals send us things. So I mean, again, I'm all about citizen engagement, and we see that, but I don't know to spend that money, which we had talked about possibly doing, I don't know that that's the right thing right now. Now, I'm still all about business, but I'm also about safety and everything else, so we've gotta look at that as a policy decision as we go forward, and I think code enforcement through our planning department has addressed that, and people, we can't just allow a hundred businesses along the strip, but, you know, but we also have to hold accountable. Public Works has been working with some because things happen that need to be held accountable for those businesses if they're doing something wrong. So that process, I think, is evolving in a way, so that's very important. Obviously, the MPO, Vice Chair right now, and then the end of the year, if everything goes the way we think, I'll be Chair. We had two meetings, or we had a virtual meeting and an in-person meeting about some of the alternatives and different things around the city that are happening downtown. And again, we try to get the information out. We put it out, we get it, and people, for whatever reason, aren't finding it. And I don't know that there's any other way that we can do more. I mean, without us on this dais going and knocking on every door and trying, because the social media is out there. But there was virtually no attendance because, as we know, until something affects that individual at their property, they're not gonna get engaged. So, you know, I mean, it's getting out there, and DOT is really wanting to do it, and I think I wanna thank Jim and Kim for some of the things that engineers sitting in a room a hundred miles from here looking on a map are trying to do the best they can, but they don't know our day-to-day operations and that. And I was glad that our staff, especially, I think, Kim, got them to understand why something they came up with, which from a ten thousand feet, looking down, looked like a good plan, but it wouldn't work. So I think, you know, so even though we didn't have much citizen involvement, we did have staff involvement, so I'm very proud that our staff looked at that and were working through that process. See if there's anything else other than, and I bet you Mrs. Moore and Mr. Rudicell, and maybe a few in the audience would know, what is the only school, college school ever to win a national championship against their archrival in the same state?
I know the answer, too.
And it was a beat-down.
Fifty-two to ten is...
Was that a replay, too?
It's a beat-down.
It was a replay, too.
That's the legal term.
Hey, it's...
Replay's always favor the...
Favor, it was choke at Doak for the Gators, and then thirty-one, thirty-one, and then a beat-down a month later, after...
Point of order, sir. Nineteen ninety-four was when Florida lost the tie, and then lost the fifth quarter in the first quarter.
So, but those rivalries are fun, and I was glad to see today the two football teams that got the money, the grants, because as we know, and I said it, but as we know, anytime you can give a young person, and those programs, not our only boys, they're girls also, my grandchildren play in the Wildcats, one's on the football team, and my granddaughter is the cheerleader, and, you know, they're up there...
And you have three former cheerleaders sitting up your...
Sitting up here, so the cheerleaders are, you know, just as important as the football players, but it gives kids an opportunity to see how being teammates and all that, so...
I didn't hear the three word, I'm sorry.
Ms. Coachman?
It was not me.
I thought you were talking about Mr. Rudicell.
Florida, were you cheerleader at Florida?
Was he?
So, but anyway, no, it's, again, I wanna thank this council because, you know, not only, and I'm thanking them kind of through the administration part of things, because the engagement that we have now of learning, seeing, touching, you know, all of the things that we have to do for the transparency. I mean, we know, our meetings are always at the same time, basically, on Wednesdays and that, and there's opportunity for people to come. If they don't, we can't make them. But I hope that shows that they're confident in the level of government that we're serving, and that we're able to do it, and through the administration, and the transparency part of it. Because that's something that's important to all of us and all of our staff. And I think that's, you know, when you look through everything, and it shows throughout the whole city now, and I think it's resonating into our county, that people are seeing that we're doing some good things. And again, we've said it many times, we can disagree sometimes on a policy or a political part of things, but you gotta work for the good of the whole, and that's what we're doing to take that next step. So I'm just proud to be your mayor and working with everybody, and obviously proud to have the staff that we have continuing going forward. Because as Mr. Perry would said earlier with the org chart, and some of the things we're doing, and Ms. Barnaby confirmed from her history sitting up here, we've got a lot of projects that are going on that, you know, at once, not only just one, but a lot, but that's setting this community up for that next generation that might make it easier for them, and that's our kids and grandkids. So thank you for that, and let's go to department heads. Any...
I just wanted to get on everybody's calendar up here, October the twentieth. I know I've already gotten onto yours. Kewa- I don't know how many people realize the history on Tamiami Trail of the Tin Canturus and the old trailer park that's there, the Tropical Palms, which is really, I mean, Tamiami Trail, if you go and look at their facility there, I mean, it is pristine. But we're do- the Kewanas is doing a marker there to celebrate when we, when the trailer park, we sold the property to them for the trailer park, and that's gonna be October the twentieth at ten a.m., and lots of great history there. And it'll be short, but I'd like to invite you all to be there.
And we'd like to thank Public Works, because when the plaque came in, Public Works helped us get the bronze plaque up, and obviously, because Kewanas throughout our city with a lot of organizations, and especially their main, and it's right on the top of the book, the Boys and Girls Club at the time, or Boys Club at the time, but just what they really did and made the difference. And then flowing down over the years to hundreds of other organizations, and also helping the county, our overall county, get roads and places, and the Civic Center and all of that, so thank you. No, that's a good, that'll be a good, fun time. So department heads, anybody? Ms. Singer?
We had our first meeting with Stantec, who's running the visioning process through the Planning Department. One of the first parts of the process is gonna be talking to the mayor, council members, and city administrator initially. They're gonna conduct a lot of those meetings through the end of this year, and then beginning next year, they're gonna start to have those public meetings, two in each ward, two with the business community, and two with the nonprofit community. And then culminating in probably over the summer months, having an online survey that everybody can participate in, everybody who's a resident of the city. So we'll give them your contact information, they'll be reaching out to you, so you'll be hearing from somebody from Stantec, that's what it's all about, in case you're wondering why they're getting with you. And if there's any questions you have for us in the process, please let us know. We're gonna help them administer the process and help them set up the meetings. If you have favored locations where you think these meetings should be held in your ward, please let us know, and we can start to arrange those as well. Anything else you have in terms of contacts that they should be having with stakeholders in the community, again, we can begin to, they'll ask you those questions, but we can also begin to sort of set some other meetings up for them as well. And that process should take about a year, or hopefully less, and we hope that it's gonna help us, inform us on any changes we wanna make to our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Perry, Lance Williams, apparently the new Chief Operating Officer. I just wanted to show my gratitude and thank you for your support through, I've been here for nine years. I've had the opportunity to work with some really great people from our utility billing staff, taller department directors, both of our chiefs. You know, I deal with a lot of them through the budget process, obviously, and some other decisions kinda made on a daily basis, and really, in the nine years that I've been here, the last couple of years is when I've really seen the team of Bradenton come together. And I think that's prudent, and obvious in our storm preparations, and we deal with the hurricanes as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for trusting me and believing in me, and then I also wanted to thank you for your support, and then everybody else's support, including my daughter Rachel, who is in the audience, so, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Rachel needs to get back to work.
Oh, sit down.
Please, please sit down.
Good morning, Jim McCallum, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Just wanted to give an update. We have a project ongoing on Riverview Boulevard for drainage. The likelihood is you're seeing a little, a lot of activity this week. The problem that has been encountered is the high tides are straddling the majority of the workday for the contractor. So they've been out, they check it every morning to make sure whether they can do it. I know they've already completed the pipeline work at Twenty-Fourth Street, so until the tides, they're moving into the later afternoon, and we'll go from there.
And they work all night?
You just can't get a break on that thing, can you?
Please, please have them work all night so that when people start calling, I will give them your number.
Most of them on that street have it.
I think you're right. I think they have all our numbers, if you really wanna know the truth.
And on a more positive note, we expect that the landscaping work on Thirty-Third Street Court should be wrapping up this week. The majority, all the trees are in, I think they're working on the shrubs right now and cleanup work, so that should be completed this week.
I think it looks beautiful.
I think so, too, and we have had some positive feedback from some, at least one resident that called Mr. Perry, or Mr. Perry spoke with, so we're happy to hear that, so just wanted to pass that one.
Thank you. Anyone else from department heads? All right, I just have two final things. Ms. Singer made me think of it with engagement, but FDOT has reached out and wanna engage with every councilperson and talk, so that's important. Because again, that shows the engagement, where all I ever heard when I got on here was from one of our senior councilmembers at that time, that DOT doesn't care what you think, they're gonna do what they want.
It wasn't me.
But they are now engaging to try to engage, so, you know, as some of the, as ambassadors, as we know, we may have to get out in the community more than some of our social media. And I just wanna make sure, and some of the council, and to understand that I think when you send an email to Ms. Melton about sharing stuff, it really should be information on committees that you're appointed to, not political stuff. Because, you know, sometimes we get engaged with groups that are out there that are more politically motivated, and we wanna make sure that we don't send that because it looks like then we support that. And, you know, we get the same email, all of us get the same emails, even though we're not copied as one, but, you know, I just feel that it's very important that it's not, it puts Ms. Melton in a situation where sometimes she shouldn't be in, and if it's a policy decision and somebody thinks it's important, then bring it up at a council meeting. So, but the boards you're on, sharing it is important, Minnesota League, the different things, MPO, you know, Sarasota Bay, those type of things, yeah, that's stuff that we've asked to find out, so, so it'll make that very important, so. All right, I don't have anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Perry?
Briefly, a couple of things.
Pull your microphone.
All right, of course.
Mayor, Council, Barnaby, can you hear me now? I just wanted to say thanks to the council for getting with L and L over the course of last week. Of course, Council Barnaby needed to do it a little bit earlier than that, but we had really good meetings, I thought, my takeaway, as it relates to architectural standard design for the City Hall project and the proposed developer. I think it was very valuable for them, that they gave me very positive comments as far as what some of the feedback they received was, and how helpful that will be to try to make this project be world-class and consistent with the best Bradenton that Bradenton, you know, can and wants to be. And that happened, I think it was, we got out of here about five fifteen or something Friday night, and I appreciate it.
All right, bud.
No, that's, I appreciate it, Councilwoman Coachman, and everybody took their Friday and gave really good feedback and the like. Appreciate it, I think it'll show itself here when we start to see some proposed renderings for the next step. I'm trying to bring this towards a massive development agreement, one of the important components of that is compliance with, substantial compliance with architectural standards, so we know what it will generally look like, and that type of perspective. Also, I just wanna say that I've been meeting with Mr. Burton a lot and CRA, and he's really given some promising information to potential projects and development, redevelopment for the city of Bradenton. I think it's really going to pay dividends and connect the city side with the CRA side, along with other government partners that we've had success over the last couple of years leveraging and trying to utilize the county in particular, the state, and even the federal government. And I think that'll be really helpful, and I think Chairman Kramer will be able to do a lot with that, as well as yourselves as board members, to really take us to potentially even a higher level. So I've been really pleased about that. Mayor and I went to Seaport Manatee last week and spent a morning there. If you get a chance, it's an awesome operation. Carlos Bakaros is the director of it, and of course, it's through the county, but it's a Quaisai County operation, but their contributions to the area, and particularly Bradenton, are fairly significant. When they bring people in from South America that are magnets of commerce and try to coax them to do a lot of their business here, they, there's no hotels around Seaport, so they come to Bradenton, and he says, you know, "We show 'em Bradenton," because it looks great, and you guys are doing good things there. So good tide floats all boats, and also thanks to the mayor and the chief's, Fire Chief Gear for the Firehouse Sub. The Firehouse Subs has a foundation, and they gave us three tools that are very expensive tools for rescue and extraction, extrication from vehicles. They're kinda what they used to be, the jaws of life, they're all new now and everything, but they were very cool, and they gave awards last week, I think it was on Tuesday that we went out there. Good job on that. And then lastly, Mr. Huffman and I, and Rocco, and some other folks are going to follow up on the retiree healthcare situation, trying to look for longer-term, more permanent, more sustainable, and stable solutions to that issue that we had come before the council. So I didn't want you to think that, you know, we solve a problem and it goes away until it doesn't go away. We continue to stay on these things, and that's the nature of the beast, and we got a great partnership with IAF and our fire union and our leadership over there and the like, so appreciate it. And FDOT, we had that meeting that was after hours, it was interesting what you said, that there was, it was a publicly noticed meeting, there was no public there, I don't think I saw anybody from the public. Kim and Jim did a great job, I've never seen, you know, two people go in from a local community and pretty much flip the consulting engineers that had these alignments that they thought, "Oh, it would work, this is gonna be wonderful, it's gonna mitigate traffic down there." And they did a really good job of delicately saying, "You may wanna consider this," and by the end of it, it seemed like they were much more open to consideration. So we're Bradenton, we're getting out there. they were much more open to consideration. So where Bradenton, we're getting out there.
And where Bradenton downtown with less scaffolding.
Ah, that's what I see.
So glad you brought that up.
That's a good point.
It's almost gone around the, the county building, which again, we understand why, but it was just something that, you know, we've worked in the county, finally had their legal issues. But, but the majority of it's down. And I think by Thursday, tomorrow, it's supposed to be totally down and, and, you know, so it'll be interesting. So thank you to the county and the county commission for, and the staff and their new administrator, Charlie Bishop, getting that done. So hearing nothing else, we'll be adjourned.